Good afternoon, good afternoon. How y'all doing? Welcome to our Griffin Spalding Board of Education work session. Today is August 5th, 4 o'clock PM. So we're starting right at 4 o'clock. Ask that you please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate. Alright, we're now ready for our roll call. When your district is called, please signify by saying present. District 1, present. District 2, present. District 3, here. District 4, here. District 5, and we have a quorum. Prayer in pledge allegiance, our prayer will be led by Mr. Holmes of the 3rd District, and our pledge will be led by Ms. Weldon of the 4th District.
Lord God, as we stand with head bowed, we come before you with thanksgiving and gladness in our hearts. Father God, we come right now praising and lifting up your name, thanking you for our life, and thanking you for life as it is because we know it is your desire. We ask right now that you continue to cover our system, cover our students, cover our staff, and Lord God, cover all those who are working on the behalf of our children. And we ask, Lord God, that we make decisions that will be beneficial for all concerned, and it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
By the United States of America and Republic, where we, patient, under God, indivisible,
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, now it is time for the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to today's agenda for August 5th? It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the 5th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Register of the 2nd. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Alright, 5-0, the adoption of the agenda is approved. Consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda for today's meeting, August 5th? Yep, alright, yep. Properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the 5th District. Is there a second? Seconded by the gentlelady from the 4th District, Ms. Weldon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Vote by signifying by raising your right hand. 5-0, consent agenda is approved. Alright, presentations and discussions. Up, we have UVA updates. Mr. Chris Loki.
Good evening Chairman Brown, members of the board, and interim superintendent Dr. Donald Warren. I'm here this afternoon to speak with you about our UVA schools, the purpose of the program, and the supports that are provided. First, I will go over our non-negotiables to be professional, be accountable, communicate effectively. Also, our focus areas, literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving. Our vision being a distinctive brand, strong leaders, and great schools, and the mission is to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. This afternoon, on our roadmap to success, we will be going over several of the areas mentioned: student achievement, family and community engagement, high-performing staff, and organizational and operational efficiency. First, out in the audience, I would like to introduce our five UVA Acceleration Zone Schools and the principals. When I call your name, if you will, just stand. And first, we have Atkinson Elementary, and a new principal at Atkinson Elementary, Ms. Quinidra Jackson. Let's give her a round of applause. Next, we have Moore Elementary Principal, Dr. Audra Olaquoyah. Then we have Oars Elementary Principal, Mr. Corinza Barnes. Cowan Road Middle School Principal, Ms. Tiffany Campbell. And Griffin High School Principal, Ms. Najah Douglas. Because we do have some new board members, I will kind of go over the purpose of the Acceleration Zone Schools, a little bit about them. The goal of the Acceleration Zone Schools is to develop schools of excellence with highly effective leaders and teachers, thereby transforming the educational outcomes for our students in these particular five schools. What does UVA PLE do? And of course, first, with all the acronyms and that sort of thing, what does UVA PLE stand for? It stands for University of Virginia Partnership for Leaders in Education, and they strive to increase the leadership capacity of districts and school teams. It will drive organizational learning and collaboration that empowers those teams to heighten their focus and improve internal ways of working and confronting difficult problems within the system. Next, what is the purpose of the transformative initiative? The purpose of the transformative initiative is to heighten three major areas surrounding support for these schools. First, we offer side-by-side coaching on Tier 1 instruction for our principals. And next, it will also create a culture of coordination and accountability, as well as develop and attract talent to our Acceleration Zone Schools in an effort to retain the highest quality employees. Here we have our four levers of support, and UVA identifies these four key levers of change for sustainable school transformation. First, we have the leadership lever, talent management lever, instructional infrastructure lever, and differentiated support and accountability lever, because all of our schools are not the same, and we offer tailored support through UVA to those schools. Here you will see our GSCS System Big Rocks. The UVA PLE 3 Big Rocks approach is focusing on what truly matters and making sure that the most critical tasks get the attention that they deserve. Our three big rocks are Tier 1 Instruction, Creating Culture of Professionalism, Accountability, and Effective Communication, and lastly, Talent Development. Here we have our District Big Rock number one, and we have some action steps with that, but for Big Rock number one, we're focusing on supporting principals as our instructional leaders. Big Rock number two is about building a culture of accountability and support. And Big Rock number three centers on talent management for the Acceleration Zone Schools, something that we focused on. In this slide, you will be able to look, and we have the Power of Data-Driven Instruction by Paul Bambrick-Santoya. And this was a standout professional learning for our principals, and the principals were able to attend this professional learning, bring back strategies and best practices to their school, and some of them will mention these strategies for data-driven instruction in their presentations. And we have, last but not least, before our principals come up and share their slides, our progress summary from UVA. And I will read this, this is from Brandon Gaskins. If you remember, Mr. Gaskins, he came to a previous board meeting and was able to talk to the board, but this is kind of a synopsis for the board. "Over the last three years, the Griffin Spalding County School System is demonstrating meaningful progress in its collaboration with the University of Virginia Partnership for Leadership in Education. Through sustained engagement of the core teaching change team and five school principals, GSCS has laid a strong foundation for lasting transformation that centers on equity, capacity building, and student achievement." So at this time, what I want to do is go ahead and call up the principals. First, I'll call up Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary, Ms. Quinidra Jackson.
Alright, good evening. So participation in UVA PLE has strengthened our ability to interpret and utilize data to track student progress and identify areas for improvement. Regular analysis of achievement data has led to targeted interventions, particularly for underperforming student subgroups. Data-driven instruction has become a school-wide priority, contributing to higher student achievement. Since participating in the UVA PLE, there has been measurable growth in standardized test scores and other academic metrics. The Georgia DOE recognized ATK as an exceptional progress school for meeting the criteria for the CSI Progress Designation.
And let's give her a round of applause for that last one, because that was announced at the federal conferences.
Mr. Loki, Ms. McDonald, ask your question again.
Yes, they recognize Atkinson Elementary at the federal conferences, the Georgia DOE Federal Conference, and they were able to go up on stage and that sort of thing as being an exceptional progress school for CSI designation. Once again, great job. Next, we have those aviators, Oars Elementary School. No, I'm sorry, Moore Elementary School, come on up. Dr. Olaquoyah. Paige is stuck together.
Alright, so one thing that I wanted to talk about as it relates to UVA, I've had the pleasure of doing this in Clark County as well, so this was my second go-around in participating in UVA. And one of the big things that they really push is about systems and processes. So you'll see at Moore, one of our processes and our priorities is really data-driven instruction. So everything we do, we design around making sure we have effective Tier 1 instruction. And so part of that has resulted in increased ELA percentage of students at Tier 3 or 4, math increased by nine percentage points, and this is based on our reading. We also had positive gains in science, and we had a plus 10% increase because we got the news today that our attendance increased over 10 percentage points. We've also had some staffing issues in 4th and 5th grades, so we know that impacted our ELA, but due to our strong processes and systems, we were still able to see our gains. So I will say, one of our biggest takeaways in being a member of UVA participation, one question I always ask my team, is there a process for that? We're all about our process and systems, which has led to positive outcomes for our scholars, so proud to be a part of this work.
Thank you, Dr. Olaquoyah. And next, we have Oars Elementary School. Corinza Barnes.
Good evening. So as my first year as a principal, I was introduced to UVA, and I was just thinking that, you know, this is, you know, something that we're just gonna have to do. But once we got involved in the work, I did find it very, very helpful getting things done, implementing change, and so at Oars, the UVA PLE partnership yielded the following results. We had a focus on Tier 1 instruction, which led to an increase in all tested areas for the milestones. I think we were one of two elementary schools that actually showed an increase in all of the tested areas. Once again, through the partnership, we had a focus on climate and culture, and we were once again named a distinguished PBIS school. And the last thing, through professional growth and collaboration, we retained over 90% of our teachers, and I think that, you know, was directly contributed to UVA, the partnership. One of my main takeaways from UVA, we were able to see other schools having some of the same issues that we had, and we were able to get firsthand info on how they were addressing problems, and so, you know, we leaned in on what other schools were doing. We had different case studies that we experienced during the summers, which showed you how to implement change, things to look out for, and, you know, it was really all about taking care of the people at your school, and so those were my biggest takeaways from UVA. Thank you.
And congratulations to Oars there. He improved in all three big rocks there: Tier 1 Instruction, Talent Development, and Culture. Congratulations once again. Next, we have Cowan Road Middle School, Ms. Tiffany Campbell.
So like Mr. Barnes, I started the UVA PLE as my first year in middle school, which is like starting over again as principal when you transition to another level. But the work that we did there really did help me create a culture and environment that I've seen grow and transform over the last three years. So some of the things that we focused on specifically was really improving teacher practice and school culture. We worked with the Avid team to create a culture where Avid strategies were implemented in many classrooms. Teachers are recognized for their implementation as a result of, and as a result, we became an Avid-certified school, so we're excited about that, and Avid is really one of our biggest pushes this year. We really want that to be school-wide. We continue with our full-day PLCs, and the opportunity that the full-day PLCs provide is the opportunity to collaborate uninterrupted. We utilize subs for that. This allows our teachers to be able to sit down and plan out their units, and we schedule those so that unit planning happens about two to three weeks out before they actually start the unit. So they are ahead of their pre-work, and that gives them the opportunity to effectively collaborate. It's not rushed. They're allowed to work with their colleagues across other grade levels. The instructional coaches is highly involved in that planning, and the result of that is just a more effective and cohesive PLC process. One of the biggest things that we are all very excited about was the decrease in our student discipline. We saw, I believe it was a 22% decrease in our discipline from last year to this year. One of the things that I stressed to the team when I entered was that we wanted to really change perception, and I believe that we are really working to change perception. I'm also excited that we've been able to lower our turnover, and while we still had a number of new teachers this year, we did not have to hire anywhere close to what we've had to hire over the last few years. We have a great staff. We've been very excited just about the work that we have been able to sustain. One of the biggest things, I think, one of the biggest takeaways from UVA PLE is the sustainability factor, to be able to continuously develop. With the Summer Institute offered, and with Winter Institute offered, was the opportunity to be able to sit in rooms with people doing the same work and hear how people are sustaining the work, and be able to come back into your building and try to implement some of those same strategies, to be able to discuss things with the coaches and get some insight on whether or not what you're doing is going to move you forward. And the biggest push with the data-driven instruction and the work that we do with Paul Bambrick-Santoya has really impacted me and how I approach what I want teachers to accomplish at the end of the day with their planning. We want them to be able to look at that data and really change how they implement their instruction, and it's a work in progress. We still have a lot of work to do in that particular area, but our teachers are definitely growing, and we're seeing a huge impact, so I've been grateful to be a part of the UVA PLE.
Impressive numbers there from Cowan Road Middle School. And last, we have Griffin High School, Ms. Najah Douglas.
I think that's a little tall for me, but I'll go with it. Alright, so the first area that I'll talk about is similar to the rest of the cohorts that participated in the UVA PLE. This past year was my first year participating, so being able to come in and when some of the work has already been started has been very beneficial. I will say, having a chance to collaborate with the other colleagues, other principals that have been a part of the UVA PLE has been extremely helpful because they have assisted me in creating different processes and some of the work they've done previously, and some of the protocols that we use were very helpful in celebrating the successes and even identifying still the problems of practice that we have in our schools to give us a plan. And the 90-day plan, the cycles, really have been helpful in implementing intentional work and looking at those areas. So really, if we look at the area first of strengthening Tier 1 instruction, that has been a big focus for us at Griffin High School. We've identified our PLCs and really worked on planning and coaching, really looking at misconceptions, planning for instruction, and making sure our instruction is rigorous. And Avid, the work of Avid has also assisted with that, and will continue that, really looking at what is the standard? What does rigor mean? How do we see rigor in the classroom? And what exactly are we looking for when we say classrooms of rigor? And really getting down to the student needs, just looking at not just percentages, but looking at the students. What are we looking at, our students that are being impacted by being chronically absentee, absent, however, students with grades and behavior, and looking at all of those areas to really identify interventions and supports needed, and coming up with processes to address those concerns. Another area we focused on is teacher collaboration, so really looking at, like I said, our professional learning communities to have that commonality, to look at student work, student learning, to identify, come up with assessment plans, which has been some work that we've started this past year and will really strengthen this coming year. And again, identifying instructional strategies that work, looking at high-yield strategy and Avid strategies, things that we want to see consistent school-wide as well as by department. And lastly, the work of UVA has really helped with the 90-day plans, really staying focused. As a principal, you have so many different hats to wear, you have so many areas to focus on, but really identifying what are those big rocks, what are those main things, and keeping those at the forefront, and really having the goal-setting mind, holding each other accountable, and being able to progress monitor as we go through is really something that UVA is very big on. So creating those processes so we can look at the plan, you know, identify the plan a month out, where are we seeing gains, where do we need to continue to work, what adjustments do we need to make in real time. So UVA has really helped us with coming up with the protocols, the processes, and most importantly, the collaboration with our other colleagues, so that I know if I have an issue, I can call one of the other colleagues, especially in UVA, and they can assist with those areas.
Thank you, great job, Griffin High. Alright, as we conclude the presentation here, you might ask, well, how are UVA schools treated differently? Well, some of the things that we've done with UVA over the years that's different from our regular schools is that UVA schools, we have designated substitute teachers there for that school daily. We have a Dean of Discipline, Student Discipline, to work with behavior issues to go ahead and address them early and get those students back to class. We also have UVA-designated job fairs where our UVA principals are able to come in and look at the candidates before the rest of the schools do. And also, we have feedback, as mentioned by Ms. Douglas, on our 90-day action plans from UVA professors. And last but not least, which I think you heard most of them mention this, is executive-level training and professional development. Paul Bambrick-Santoya personally delivered to them on data-driven instruction. And last but not least, although our partnership with UVA has come to an end, as Ms. Campbell mentioned, we want sustainability. We want to be able to continue as a system our 90-day action plan and continue also with our school 90-day action plans as we strive for success in the Griffin Spalding County School System. Do I have any questions from the Board of Education? Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Loki. We've heard Mr. Loki's presentation this evening. Are there any questions from the Board of Education as it relates to this presentation? Alright, we're gonna recognize the lovely representative from the southeast corner of the district, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Loki. I just wanted to personally thank each of the principals for being here. I believe one of our first reports, I had requi- I believe our, one of our first reports, I had requested that we hear from the people that are in the trenches every day. I have total respect for what you have done, Mr. Loki, through this process, but when you hear it from the mouths of those that are slinging the mud, it makes a totally different impact on us as we move forward. So, I personally just wanted to thank each of you for being here today and what you've added to this, these two years. I didn't realize it was over. I thought we had one more year.
Oh, ma'am, this was the last year.
Now, the only question I have is, will they be able to contact UVA in the future if they are, I can't imagine any of these principals being stuck anywhere, but, you know, they might get a tire in the mud and need some help. Are they, is UVA still available to us in some capacity?
I would say yes, ma'am, because the relationships that we form with Mr. Brandon Gaskins and several of the other UVA leaders, they are more than willing to help. And, you know, I know that they would probably echo this, but, you know, you mentioned something. They make the magic happen for our students in their buildings every day. Let's give them another round of applause.
Absolutely. Thank you again to each of you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Loki.
Are there any other questions from any other members? All right. We'll go over to Mr. Holmes in District Three, representing our northeast corner of the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Loki, you, you, you mentioned, I guess, an ending point. What, what exactly is the norm? Is it two years, three years, or have people extended? Do you have any data or information that you can provide on that?
Yes, sir. I, I have some information on that. They, they do, it's usually a three-year process, and, and basically what they're trying to do is work themselves out of a job because they're, they're teaching you the process where you can do it, continue with those schools and maybe implement it to other schools. But UVA does offer a, an accelerate program that could go on a year past this. At this time, we've chosen not, not to go with that, but they do offer a one-year extension on this, and so I hope that answers your question.
Well, that, that leads me to another question. Why, why did we decide not to participate in that?
Yes, sir. I, I think right now, we really, as a system, we're kind of waiting some guidance as we move forward. In the situation, we do have an interim superintendent, and I think we were kind of waiting some guidance as we did move forward on that.
Dr. Warren, will you speak to that?
Good evening, yes. Although we've had some good results from the UVA partnership, I think it's worthwhile to, to pause for a minute to practice the, put in, practice some of the action steps that we, we have. Then we can spread it to some other schools in district, using district personnel. Additionally, there's a cost associated with it. And with money being tight these days, I thought it would be prudent to wait, at least this year, before we take further steps with a permanent superintendent.
So, so in a nutshell, that decision being driven by, by finance?
Partly, yes, sir. And not having a permanent superintendent, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a large financial commitment.
Well, well, I'm gonna fall a suit on what Ms. McDonald said, hearing from the people who are down there with the nuts and bolts. Have we included the principals on making that decision, whether it be beneficial for the kids, because that's what, that's what it's all about. We, we doing what's, what's best and what right for kids. And sometime, we have to bite the bullet, and we want to make sure this is not an opportunity that we are missing because we are not biting the bullet in the right place.
And I, I do know that it, it is money in the, for the budget that we just passed for UVA. And so, I guess when we look at the test scores and the other data, the board will be able to provide direction to the superintendent in which direction we're going to go with the UVA. But I think at this moment right here, let's go ahead and get through this particular budget year, and also let's get through the superintendent search, and then the board will provide that guidance moving forward from there. But it is in the budget for this school year, 25, 26, to continue with UVA.
Okay. That's, that's good to hear, Mr. Chair, because I, I would hate to kind of hamstring, for lack of a better term, these principals with something that's been beneficial for them and their students, all because of us not doing our due diligence to find the funds, which I, I've seen us do it before. So, just, just letting my feelings be known. Hearing all, all of this, I applaud you, the principal, the students, but let's not cut them short. We need to do all we can to make sure that this continues.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no problem at all. Are there any other questions from the board at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Loki. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, policy JCDAF, student use of electronic device first read, Dr. Christopher Ridley.
Good evening, board members, board chair, Dr. Warren. Thank you to Mr. Brown also for helping us to create this policy. The district is presenting policy JCDAF, the use of electronic devices by students for first read. Board policy JCDAF has been drafted based on the state legislation, House Bill 340, which prohibits student use of cell phones or personal portable electronic devices from bell to bell, which is their instructional day during the school day. The policy will sit for 30 days to allow revisions before being brought to the board for final approval. It is recommended that the BOE review policy JCDAF and provide revisions before final approval.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Ridley. Board members, are there any questions as it relates to this particular policy JCDAF?
I have a couple.
All right. Ms. McDonald, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Hey, Dr. Ridley. I'm, I'm a little confused. How does this, how does this differ from what the system put out about devices prior to school starting? Is it the same? Is it different?
Yes, it is different. What we put out is in our code of conduct.
Okay.
And so, this is actual policy that the board has to approve.
Be a state legislature?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And my second question is, line 15 on the back, students with a health condition. What health conditions are we talking about? I know diabetes you can monitor on your phone. What, what else would we be monitoring via phone?
Yeah, that is the main one for students that have diabetes. And of course, they have the, I've got what it's called, but they have a system on their phone that they can check. And so, there's updated technology to help students and adults. That way, they can check their sugar level.
And I was just curious, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Douglas, how has it gone thus far with regard to the, if I may, Mr. Brown?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
I was just curious as to how the first two or three days of school have gone with regard to devices, especially in the high school arena. Well, I was a middle school teacher, so it could really be both. I'm just curious to see. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for letting me ask that question.
No problem at all.
For the high school level, we have allowed the students to use the cell phones during breakfast and lunch, so that has gone well. It's not totally taken it away thus far, so that has been a good compromise for them. The headphones, smartwatches, tablets have been a little bit of a struggle, but we've told them to make sure they're not having that in the building, so it's gone really well. We haven't had any major discipline issues. We just have to reiterate. So, we've given them some grace.
Sure.
And grace is over, starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So, we have been very clear with that, but no major issues. And the teachers have been very, very appreciative of the policy and us taking the step to address it during instructional time.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Was that a, Ms. Douglas, was that a conversation that you had with the scholars as it relates to being able to give some leeway for breakfast and for lunch of them having the device?
We did. Mr. Sands and I got together and discussed the commonality with high school. So, they are appreciative of the time, but I also reiterated there are other districts that even high school can't have them anytime. So, we talked about those things, and I think the other teachers, football coach, different things, just different perspectives, giving them the, the good, the bad, and different, and the reason why have made it more beneficial for the kids, and they understand.
But they've been open to having the conversation, and they are open to realize that if it is abused, that you guys will have to make another decision.
Definitely. They're always open to the conversation.
All right. So, you hear that, scholars? That is a great skill for, to be college and career-ready, is to be able to talk through things. And so, for the scholars that are listening, we, we pray and hope that you continue to follow those rules so that we don't have to make other rules. And so, it is good to hear that our principals and our scholars are meeting in the middle of the road, as it is going to be a long school year, but this is a great start, and it's just, it's good for me to hear that, hear those things. Ms. Campbell?
So, at the middle school level, last school year, we began to implement or enforce portions of the code of conduct related to the cell phones. And so, this year, we just continued with that. So, our process is that students are to put their devices away when they enter the building. So, as they're coming in to the building, we have them put their devices away. We have several staff members on duty, and they do not take their phones out until the day is over four o'clock. So, basically, at four o'clock when we start dismissal, we do allow them to take their phones out at that time. Many of them do need to be in contact with their parents as they get ready to approach getting on the bus, but there is no cellphone usage at all. We announce that in the morning, that our students are to have their phones put away. Teachers do enforce that rule by if they see a student with their, on their phone, they call an administrator. We confiscate the phone. We give it back to them at the end of the day for the first offense, and we make parent contact if they're a repeated offender. We have not had any issues the first few days. Today, actually, I think we had the first incident, and it was a student that, today was her first day in school. So, had a conversation with the student and then just redirected them. So, our teachers have been very supportive of that in enforcing and implementing the policy, implementing that rule. We're just going to continue to do that, and we will provide some incentives, but our main goal is to make sure that they do not have access to their phones during the school day.
I think, Ms. Douglas, what you were describing is what I tried to do in my classroom, a win-win. The school wins, the child, the scholar wins because you're not taking it totally away. But there, there's parameters and boundaries, and I think that's good. It's a win-win, so I appreciate that. Thank you both.
So, no one died?
All did.
All good. All right.
He said, "No one died," out of order. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Are there any other questions to Dr. Ridley as it relates to the policy? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Ridley. Go to our IT department. Let's go to our quarter three graphic for our norms and protocols. So, we're in quarter three now, and we have new words that we want to bring before you as a governance team. They are consistency, accountability, and excellence. Quarter three words for our norms and protocols. Thank you so much, IT team. All right. Next up, Project Strong proposal for scholars with behavioral concerns, Dr. Chris Ridley.
All right. Charles decided to adjust this, so everybody need to get on my toes. I'm good. All right. Project Strong. I have Mr. Kelly, who is over our special ed department, and I have Dr. Elijah McElroy, who is our behavior specialist, climate specialist for the district. We have a joint commitment to make sure that our scholars are taking care of as far as their behavior. As we know, we've heard and we've seen the numbers of our discipline or behavior in the schools. And so, we have looked at different programs and visited other schools, other districts, and we have come up with a way that we can possibly help, especially with the elementary school and the middle school, for our discipline or behaviors in the schools. So, we're going to talk about Project Strong. Mr. Kelly is going to give us a presentation, and also, Dr. McElroy.
All right. Good evening. We are here to, to talk about the district's proposal for a separate school environment option for students that demonstrate extensive behavioral difficulty in the traditional school environment. Dr. McElroy is going to talk about the student behavior data and why this is needed.
While half of the data you see here for ODRs, office discipline referrals, you see half of the schools actually are stable, or they have a decline in discipline. Well, you also see the other half actually have an increase. This rise is likely due to a combination of factors, including younger students still developing foundational socio-emotional and behavioral skills, and the lingering effects of disrupted early learning experiences. These trends highlight the need for targeted support and early intervention at the elementary When looking at our out-of-school suspension for elementary, again, you do see, well, half of the schools had a decline or stable. There's an opposite increase in the other half. And this is also due to exhibiting incivility, defiance, aggression, leading to more severe or repeated behaviors. And this also reflects the need for stronger early interventions and support systems to address behavioral challenges at the elementary level.
All right. So, the Project Strong program purpose is to provide individualized, consistent, and evidence-based behavior support that promotes academic, social, and emotional growth for students with intensive needs. So, for any project program, school, you have to have a good brand and core belief system. And with Project Strong, strong stands for self-regulation, teamwork, responsibility, ownership, navigation of emotions and choices, and growth. And these are the values that Project Strong is striving to promote in the students. The motto is, "Strong choices, strong minds, and strong futures," so that we're starting with a good brand, a good core belief system with the project. Goals of Project Strong are to reduce missed instructional time. Project Strong provides an structured and supportive school environment designed to reduce time loss to out-of-school suspensions by addressing behavioral challenges through targeted interventions. The second major goal is to minimize disruptive behaviors in the school setting, and initially, that's going to be through the students being placed in a different environment, but the long-term goal of that is that they return back to their home school and to that native school environment, and they're able to apply the tools that they learned through Project Strong. And then that's the long-term goal for the project. The third overarching goal, improve student outcomes through targeted support. So, if students have the tools to be able to self-regulate their behavior, they're in school more often, they're getting the content more often, and minimizing the interruptions to the school environment and to the teaching environment in the classroom. So, what does Project Strong look like as far as staffing? So, Project Strong would have one site coordinator, one board-certified behavior analyst or lead behaviorist role, two general ed teachers, three special ed teachers, six behavior technician paraprofessionals. So, these are people that are on the paraprofessional level but received specialized training in behavioral techniques and data collection, and two transition behavior technician paraprofessionals. I'll talk a little bit about that later. And then access to existing staff. So, we have the staff that are Project Strong staff, but we also have existing staff, access to school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, counselor, climate specialists, mental health clinicians, and school nurse. At the bottom of this slide, you'll see that in the original budget for FY26, it was allocated for $1,800,000. This project as presented is budgeted at $1,500,000, which would be a savings of $750,000 over what was already put into the budget. And most of that cost savings is because it was projected out in that original budget for an outside company to completely run this. So, they're obviously going to want some profit, and they're going to have some overhead, which we're not. So, basically, we're designing this in-house. We're implementing it in-house, so that creates a good bit of savings to the district. So, for the student capacity, you'll see there's five classes designed for the project, two general ed, three special ed, with a total capacity, student capacity of 47 students. You can see the recommended staffing breakdown. Each classroom would have one teacher, one behavior technician, either eight or five kids, depending on the grade level. The grade range would be a K-2 class, a 3.5 class for the general ed side, a K-2, a 3.5, and a 6.8 on the special ed side. So, the design of the program, so what makes this program special? So, Project Strong would be a highly structured and data-driven environment. You'd have specialized staff in a smaller environment, and this is a program that's made up of students with disabilities and without disabilities. So, it's, it's any kid that has, that is demonstrating intensive behavior needs in the traditional school environment. needs in the traditional school environment. Alright, so program entry guidelines. So initial program candidates, these were a roster set based on recommendations from the previous year for suspensions and other incidents that students may have had. But for program entry for this year, Dr. McElroy is going to talk about students without disabilities.
The behavior concerns, they begin with the MTSS process where MTSS behavior plan is developed, behavior interventions are implemented, and general education students that are not responsive to interventions, who needs are beyond the resources available in school settings and do not qualify for the special education services, will be appropriate candidates for behavior-based alternative instruction, placing students in specialized settings with tailored behavioral supports necessary to improve the student behavior. When looking at students who may enter based on disciplinary tribunal, very few students may have egregious behavior or chronic discipline that would follow the same process that we have for disciplinary tribunals. Continue the MTSS process conference with parent to notify the chronic discipline concerns. And if the behavior does not improve, the student reaches a seventh referral, the student may be referred to a tribunal.
That would be a new thing for elementary tribunals. We've had, my knowledge, maybe two in the past, and it's kind of procedural. There really wasn't a place to put them, but you went through the tribunal anyway because it reached that level. But now we would have a, something available to them, and it would not just be a, you know, a place where it is, you know, punitive, but it's also going to be skill-building there. So I'll talk about the program entry for students with disabilities. So that would be a IEP team decision as part of the least restrictive environment continuum. It would be considered a separate school, and that would be something that the IEP team would determine as a need for the student. So some of the key features of the program, there's many features. I'm going to highlight three of these. We talked about it being a highly structured environment. Part of that is a daily point system. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with a Boys Town model or just having point systems in the classroom environment, but they would be levels, systems, and also daily points that would be captured through the data management system. Also, family and team collaboration. The goal is to involve the parents as much as possible, provide training, times to be able to reach the parents and to be able to collaborate with them, with the student, to be able to provide those supports in the school environment, but actually in the home environment as well. And an opportunity to provide mentoring for all the students in the program. The staff and the staff of Project Strong, as well as other staff, would be providing mentoring for the students with weekly check-ins, goal reflection, and relationship building through games and fun events.
And this setting will allow for more frequent instructional and therapeutic components, such as social skills where they all have small group instruction focusing on socio-emotional development, coping and regulation strategies, providing calming strategies, deep breathing, sensory, restorative practices, and conflict resolution, teaching students how to repair relationships and resolve conflicts, academic support with embedded behavioral support, such as structured breaks and calm down areas, and counseling and wraparound services as needed. But it could be weekly to daily sessions with a counselor or psychologist to address behavior concerns, or collaborating with community agencies to provide mental health, family, or social services.
A huge advantage of having this program, all the students in one location, is that we have climate specialists, mental health clinicians that are serving these students all over the district. They'll all be in one location so that we can kind of concentrate the services for those students. The last bullet there is talking about the parent trainings that I previously talked about, all the different opportunities to bring the parents in to be able to kind of incorporate them into the program. So the sample daily schedule, so the proposed location for this is sharing a physical location with Mainstay at, on the AZK campus. So keeping that in mind, we wanted to look at a schedule that kind of mimicked what Mainstay's schedule currently looks like, just for logistical purposes, but it also kind of matches the program goals as well. So you'll see a mixture of academic time and SEL time. At the end of the day, you also have a debrief time where we can make data reviews and adjustments for the next day. So these are some of the progress monitoring tools because we want to monitor not only the student progress, but the program effectiveness. So one of the things we would do is have a BASK or Behavioral Assessment for Children as a benchmark, and that's a rating scale that a teacher and a parent fill out. And it kind of, it rates different areas of behavioral characteristics. And then that way, if we did that three times a year, we're able to track on a larger scale the impact in the program. We would also have weekly data collection through the behavior point system, the ABC data collection is an additional point of data that we're able to analyze to see if we're having any progress in the students. Right, and then finally, we'll talk about the reintegration plan. So for students that are recommended through a tribunal, the maximum time in this program would be one year because it goes through a tribunal. The MTSS and IEP students, those would be determined through their respective teams. One of the things that we really wanted to do when we were designing this program is to make sure that students effectively and they're able to go back to their home schools and have a good transition, essentially. We want to be able to bridge the techniques that are happening at Project Strong with the techniques that need to be applied at the school. The idea of that would be that we would have a gradual transition back to their home schools where they would go either a half-day or a full-day once a week. And then a behavior technician would go with them to those home schools to be able to model the interventions that we're doing at Project Strong and to be able to coach and teach the teachers and the other staff at the home schools the same techniques that they were utilizing at Project Strong. So that's extending that, those interventions into the home school so that hopefully we don't have those students come back to the program. So that's giving us an effective exit strategy for the students. That is, that is the presentation.
So the board members, we've heard the presentation from Mr. Kelly, Dr. Ridley, and Dr. McElroy. Are there any questions from members of this body? Alright, we'll start with Ms. McDonald, and then we'll, you got questions, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Alright, and then we'll go to Ms. McDonald first, and then we'll go to Mr. Holmes.
Thank you all for being here tonight and presenting this. I think a week or so ago, Dr. Warren mentioned it, the whole board training. So how does student A get to the AZK from their home school bu, from their home school bus? Is that going to be an issue to work transportation to and from?
So we've talked about several different options for transportation, and that's something that we'll meet with Mr. Martin about. There's a couple of different options for elementary. It could be a shuttle from home school, so they would be bused to their home school and then shuttled to Project Strong, the AZK campus. It could be a hub. But yeah, that's, there's a couple of different options that we're working on. We're trying to figure out what would minimize the impact for transportation because we're obviously already, you know, tied on transportation. We understand that. So we're trying to come up with some out-of-the-box ideas potentially.
And implementation of this would be this school year, or next semester, or tomorrow?
Hopefully, as soon as we can get it together. I think...
I'll speak to that as soon as we can, because right now, we're in a honeymoon suite, a honeymoon time with our students. And so we all know that, but things are going to happen and we want to make sure that we're ready. And so whether, we're trying to get this set up as quickly as possible. You know, this may come up, well, we're able to implement it in October. But we want to be prepared, fully prepared, and not have to come back and say, "Hey, the program failed because we were not ready. We did not do an implementation plan." So we're also going to talk with principals as well to make sure that we have their feedback and see how would be the best way to do this.
So we didn't get the data sheets. So could somebody email that to the board, the data sheets that you showed up here about the number of incidents that wasn't in our, our presentation that we saw? If somebody'd email that to us, I'd be very appreciative. Also, so let's talk about Orr since Mr. Barnes is here. So he can probably go through his head right now, and he can mention probably maybe a half a dozen students that would benefit from this particular program with regard to behavior in his school. Will it only be data-driven, or will it be by perhaps recommendation also?
By extreme cases. We're going to make sure that we exhaust all systems of MTSS, all strategies that we've used. These are for students that are not responding to anything that we're doing. And so that will kind of weed out those students that we can get back into the classroom through ISS, OSS, or something, or suspension. But those students that have extreme circumstances, well, they're just not responding to anything that Dr. McElroy and the team are doing and that special ed is doing, we want to make sure that we pull them in for some type of resource that we can help them, therapy.
Okay, thank you very much. This sounds, as a former educator myself, there was always one or two in each classroom, and I'm sure everybody up here can relate to that, several in each school. But, but they still deserve the opportunity to be helped and guided and get back on track. Because most often, the behavior they show is really not their fault. And I'm a firm believer in that. You live what you learn, and they have to unlearn some very bad behaviors that I personally have had to do myself through the years. And that's what life is all about, having, knowing that I have options to act differently. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, I just wanted to ask whether or not you all have personally, I guess, witnessed or seen the instructional therapeutic components in process, and especially the parent training and opportunity for engagement. How, if you've seen it, how does that work?
I'll speak too. We had an opportunity to go down to Muskogee County, and we had an opportunity to see kids in action. It was not one of those things where they hid anything from us. We were able to see kids acting up. What we, what we saw were mental health therapists working with students that had some issues. And we did not see a lot, but those that we did see that had a blow up or something, we, they had someone there to help them out, and that's how our program would be structured. Where someone would be there to help them out and guide them through some de-escalation situations so that they can calm down and get, get themselves back to class.
Did you all see any of the, I guess, the component training with the parents, like lunch and dinner, quarterly parent conferences, that you all get a chance to see any of that?
So we didn't see that in that particular program, but that's something similar that we've done with our Mainstay program before as far as like having, inviting parents in for those dinners and having an opportunity to talk with the parents. Many of the components of this proposal is, are coming from several years of our work with different observations of different programs in different districts, with our work with our behavior special programs, both the ones that have been in school and the ones that were part of our GNETS program. So we were, in our work with Marcus Autism Center, basically, all those different components have gone into this one proposal. It's years and years of us being able to develop different components. But this is the cohesive one, project one program result of all that work, essentially.
Good, thank you. Alright, any other questions for this group? Alright, we're going to go to Ms. Weldon. Go ahead, sweetheart.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you. This program sounds like a win-win, and I'm excited about it. I do want to ask, is the program cover K through 12 students in need?
The way it's designed right now, the highest need was elementary option, and then for, we extended it into middle school for students with disabilities because we did have an extended need for students with disabilities in middle school. You know, if this was a successful program, and that's the, the will of everyone, and to extend that, extend that out to the upper grades, then that could be something that we could consider in the, in the future.
Okay, and my next question is, what's the maximum number of students that they can have?
Yes, so right now, it's designed for 47 students.
Forty-seven, that's what I thought, and I saw that. And are the counselors being utilized within the schools whenever there's an explosive need? Are they able to help?
Currently, we do have counselors supporting students at the elementary level, as well as behavior interventionists, and even some schools, like the UVA schools, having behavior deans. Even with that intensive support and layers of supports, even from climate specialists and mental health clinicians, we're talking about students whose needs are beyond what we can provide.
Right, thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Questions answered, Ms. Weldon? Alright, thank you all so much. Alright, next up, SY24, 25 Roadmap to Success Balanced Scorecard, Dr. Donna Warren. Oh, you got a hype man.
To be involved with this presentation.
Oh, okay, alright.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Warren. In Griffin Spalding County Schools, we use a balanced scorecard to track progress on key measures to see how we're doing with the priorities that help further the district's strategic plan. The balanced scorecard helps us to keep the main things the main thing, or align activities with strategy, to measure performance balancing short-term and long-term goals, to improve decision-making by tracking key performance indicators or KPIs, to see areas of strength and weakness and better inform our decisions, and to set clear expectations, facilitate communication, and encourage feedback. So we're going to go through our balanced scorecard for you this evening. The data that we're going to share this evening does not include student achievement data because that information is still currently embargoed. It will be shared at a future meeting when the embargo is lifted and it can be shared publicly. So I'll start with our communication and partnerships department, division. First, the, the top indicator or measure in our balanced scorecard, it's actually, it resides in the evaluations and accountability department, but we help keep track of it and put it on the scorecard. And that's tracking the, the number of parents that are effectively using Infinite Campus. We fell a little bit short on our, on our goals there, and largely, that's because it's a, it's a difficult thing to get parents to log in and use our parent information platform. This year, we plan to do some communication campaigns to encourage those parents. Schools already do that, but we're going to try to do a district-wide campaign just to, to help coach parents through how to log into Infinite Campus. The theory being, if we can get them in there once, hopefully, they'll go back and, and track their kids' grades. The next measure on the scorecard were the number of Let's Talk Dialogues, and we met or exceeded our goal each quarter. That's not a program that we're continuing this year, largely because of the cost. But it did kind of lead to some changes. We have a new platform that our IT department created, so we have a Contact Us landing page that's on the email signatures and also on the website. So if parents click Contact Us, it's got a quick little form that helps direct their email to the appropriate department or person. So it's, we're still getting a lot of the functionality without the $30,000 of cost.
Adam, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For our parent engagement specialist, Dr. Love, I'm sure when she's having conversations with parentals, is she asking them about being on Infinite Campus? Is that part of like maybe her ask?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer, but I can find out.
Because I just would imagine that most parents, I know when Ms. Owens was here, she engaged, interacted with a heap of parents and all that. So maybe that's something that we could ask them to start asking to help increase that number.
Good feedback. I do know that during open house, there were conversations, and at the school level, they try to engage parents. But I'll talk to Dr. Love and see what measures are being done.
And Dr. Warren, I guess, as we, this is a new school, we didn't hear much from her last year or year before they either. I would love to get a presentation from Parent Engagement, from the, Luanne Love, Luanne Love. Alright, sorry about that, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. The next measure is the number of active business partners, and we met or exceeded our goal in three out of the four quarters. We fell just slightly short the last quarter, but we picked up a bunch of new partners over the summer. So we're going to be well ahead of the curve when we start off this year. The fourth measure there is the number of mentors. That's through our Spalding County Collaborative Partnership, and we exceeded our goal every quarter last year and continued to grow that mentorship program. We've got about 150 mentors roughly, to use a round number. We need 4,000. But, but we're tracking in the right direction. We're, we're moving up. The next one is Title One workshops, and we met or exceeded our goal there. And that was largely by partnering the Title One workshops. And, and that lives over in that parent engagement department, but I help track it and put it on the, the scorecard. But the success was largely by partnering parent engagement events with other school events, whether it be final arts, band concert, athletic events. So you capture those parents while they're already coming to the school. And next, we'll have high-performing staff present on their balanced scorecard. Thank you.
Alright, come on, Ms. Battle. All right, come on, Ms. Battle.
Good evening. Goal area to high-performing staff are KPIs. We focused on the number of teachers on conversion plans, and a conversion plan teacher is a teacher working at becoming fully certified. They may be working on a provisional credential currently in school, maybe enrolled in the Georgia TAP program, but we were able to continually see a decrease, and that's what we want. That means those individuals are completing those degrees, completing those programs, and able to become fully certified. So, we were on target and were able to maintain all four quarters. The percentage of staff recognized at the district level, we got off to a slightly slower start, but we were able to finish strong. Each quarter, we're doing something different, we're looking at outstanding attendance, we're recognizing the classified employees of the year each month with a special gift, doing all different things to give some recognition to our employees. So, we did have a very successful year with that work. The percentage of daily fill rates for teacher absences per quarter, it kind of fluctuates when we look more at the second and third quarter. That is typically second quarter around cold and flu season, the substitutes get ill as well as the teachers, and it just gets a little bit harder to get them back into the building, but we did show improvement towards the fourth quarter, and we are committed to achieving that goal this year. The percentage of candidates hired as a result of the recruitment event, and we have multiple recruitment events throughout the year, we were able to exceed those targets, and we continue to track that data, with those candidates attending those recruitment fairs, and by way of applications and during the onboarding process. Retention rate of interns as teachers, we're proud to say that that was at 100%, and if you're not aware, our intern as teachers, those are individuals in their last semester, they're getting their, really, their practicum, but they're allowed to actually be the teacher in the classroom. They are compensated at a teacher/intern rate, and then they stay with us, so we're very pleased and proud to have those interns as teachers, they're staying with us at 100%. In that last year, we had five, and so they're continuing to teach with us this year. The percentage of mentors effectively supporting induction phase and teachers new to the district. We do understand that that has been a challenge for us. I think the major barriers that we experienced last year centered around the high number of induction phase teachers in relation to the number of mentors. So, we have done some things this year to improve that. We've increased the number of wise mentors. We had a full two-day induction symposium for brand-new teachers to the career field, where we better equip them to be able to go into the classroom. We are also being more involved with early identification of the mentors. When we get the recommendation form for the new hire, we're also having the question raised, who will be this person's mentor, so we can establish those relationships earlier. HR will also be more involved with supplying substitutes, half-day substitutes, to allow the mentor and mentee to actually spend some time together throughout the year. Also, the percentage of staff who participated in effective professional learning. We continue to move up and down with that. We recognize in kick-up, we were, we have to confirm the participation of the people attending, so that's an area that we worked on. Dr. Steele has revised that survey, and we anticipate meeting those goals for the upcoming year. Percentage of induction phase teachers that are retained by the district, so we're holding steady, and I was really so proud of the UVA schools, and I will tell you, all of those UVA schools had a higher retention rate this year, so that's something to really be applauded. So, our retention rate is holding steady, and we're seeing improvement each quarter. The retention rate of classified employees is the same. If you can see there, we were able to meet our targets for each of those quarters, and we're holding steady with our overall retention for the year. Next, you will hear from Organizational and Operational Efficiency, so we'll turn this over now, and you'll hear more about ESPOS.
Good afternoon, board. For the area, goal area, organizational operational efficiency, I'll start out. It involves several individuals. The first metric there, the ESPOS number six ratio, we want to have a ratio each month of 75% of actual expenditures to projected expenditures. That means the money is flowing, being spent on the projects, and they're moving along. Some of the projects included in ESPOS six include Spalding High School, Conroe Middle School, Ashree, Kennedy, Roethlisberger Middle School, and Auditorium. So, we were able to meet that target each quarter. Second, there, the resolution rate of work orders. We shot for a 75% resolution rate, and we hit it every quarter except quarter one. In quarter four, we wound it with the 84% resolution rate of our work orders, getting things done that the schools submitted. So, hats off to Mr. Baller and his team. The next two there deal with school nutrition, Mr. Willer. Want you to know that for the state of Georgia, the average participation for breakfast is 40%. Our goal is 50%. The average participation for the state of Georgia in lunch is 60%. Our goal is actually 80%. And you'll see during the school year, Ms. Willer and the staff were able to offer some nutritious meals, entice kids to eat breakfast and lunch, and we were able to meet that mark throughout the school year to be green for breakfast and lunch to stay over 50 and 80%. For transportation, Mr. Martin and his team, yes, we do track the on-time arrival rates, which are in the 90s. We started off rough, to be transparent, as you all recall, last quarter, the first nine weeks of school. So far, this school year, knock on wood, it's been pretty calm, and we like that, we like that a lot. Calm is good, yes, sir, no drama. Well, we started tracking during the school year, however, to delve down into the numbers, Mr. Martin thinks very analytical, we started actually tracking the number of late buses. So, as you can see, in the AM, quarter one, it was 476, reduced to 203, and quarter two, reduced to 183, and quarter three, reduced to 151 in quarter four. We tried to reduce it by 30% each quarter, thereabout. And for the PM, quarter one had 550, reduced to 259, 233, 217. So, many things we dealt with was hiring, we're always looking for bus drivers and bus monitors, additionally, absentees, and also some drivers being on FMLA, so we had double roasting, things of that nature. Last for me, the percentage of monthly safety drills, all of our schools conducted their, there are five drills, there are severe weather drills, there are intruder drills each month as they should, and that's reported by the principal or his or her destiny on the state website, and it's tracked. So, we're very, very thankful that principals in the audience, as well as the other principals in GSCS are conducting those drills, because safety is a very, very high priority for our school system.
Good evening, board members. I have three items, the first one being general fund balance percentage. As a reminder, we have a state average of approximately 15% of the next year's operating budget that is the best practice, so we put a target of 18, just to be a little ahead of that. But as we talked about, ours goes up and down through the year, so we're gonna end the year right now, unaudited, around 40 to 45%. We have 45% in the table, and once the audit is complete, we will know that firm percentage, and that audit is pegged to begin the day after Labor Day, so that is when that audit will begin. Our second item is our percentage of budget, drawdown percentages for the year, so we have a threshold, 25, 50, 75, and 100%. And so, we're in compliance with that, we met that target, and just for you all to know, with our new program for financial software, we actually automate reports to schools, so we have a feature that we can set up the exact reports, they're gonna need to track it and set it up, and it'll go on that day every month. And we still train the bookkeepers to run the reports for the principals, et cetera, at any time, but we have an automated process to make it easier for them to track as well. And then, in my third item, the number of school audits, and that's actually per quarter. So, we do two audits, a fall and a spring, and all this is on our financial webpage. We let the schools know in advance when we're coming. We have about a 20-point checklist that we go over with them. Some of it's really for compliance, but we do about a 30% sample on their expenditures, both on their local school accounts and their budgetary funds, and this just shows you, we did eight in the first semester, 12 in the second, eight again in 12, so we met that, approximately 40 audits for the entire year, and again, that's for the schools. All right, thank you very much.
I'm going to talk to you about MTSS for math. That next line right there, you'll see that our target was an 80% passing at 45 minutes for I-ready math. And if you look at those targets, we were a little bit under the 80%, dipped a little bit more, even to our third quarter, down to 67%, but at quarter four, ended up meeting that target at 83% for math. And then, if you will just look at that last line, MTSS for ELA, target was 80% of students completing 45 minutes and passing at 70% proficiency. That was more of a struggle for us in ELA, so that is an area that we are targeting this year, especially with the new ELA standards for our MTSS students, as well as our general ed students.
Last but not least, this S3, and we are tracking attendance and behavior. Under attendance, we looked at average daily attendance, that's our ADA, and of course, that represents the overall percentage of students present on a typical school day. And then, we also looked at chronic absenteeism, that focuses on the number of students who miss 10% of their enrolled school days. So, under, the first one, it says 95% of our average daily attendance, we're still striving for 95, so that is our goal, but we have not met our goal, but we went from 93% down to 92 as the year went on, and then 91%, which gave us an average of 92%. That's still good, we're still in the 90s, but we have not hit our goal of 95%. So, we are really focusing on attendance. We have our attendance task force from the district level, school attendance committees that we've implemented for this school year, and also, we have the attendance flow chart and PL that we're receiving for attendance. Under discipline, the number of discipline referrals we have, we have a goal of 946 for each quarter. In the first quarter, of course, we hit it, like I said, it's always the honeymoon time, 795, but then after that, of course, you see that second quarter, it went up to 1,389, then went down to 642. Those were months that we were not in school a lot, so that was December, January, around that time. Then, it went back up to 1142 towards the end of the year, school year, which gave us a total of 3,968 referrals for the year. And so, with discipline, we, of course, we're doing our PL, mini PL, that focuses on helping teachers, do some classroom management, and also, we also implementing universal expectations. We're continuing with the leader in me, and we have whisper coaching, that Dr. McElroy and the team goes out, and principals let her know who actually need some classroom management, and so she does some whisper coaching with those teachers, give them some help. We have de-escalation strategies and implementation of Project Strong moving forward. Go ahead.
The report.
[laughing].
All right, are there any questions?
I have one.
All right, Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Just one, Brown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow, I never, I never knew that we were, the percentage of students chronically absent. Please help me understand what we're doing about that.
Yes, and so, that is where we are really receiving PL from Georgia Department of Education. We had a webinar today where we were on, that way, they come up and help us out with strategies, and that happened, this is not just us, this is across the state, across the country. Everyone is dealing with absenteeism, and so, we want to make sure that our students are in school. We have a local company or vendor, EAB, that we partner with, and so, they're able to give us strategies as well, help us out with giving the schools different things that they can do to help parents understand the importance of kids being in school on a daily basis, because if they're not in school, they're not learning. And so, also, with our, we have our truancy officers, that truancy officer and social workers that do an amazing job of going out and really trying to find our students, and talking with our parents and giving them the importance of kids being in school.
I would just, I would just be curious, is the top three reasons, when you do go talk to a, or visit a parent or a guardian, what are the, I mean, you may not even know, what are the top three reasons that their child misses school?
Yeah, they may be sick, they may say that, or they may say that they didn't have a ride to school, or it may be a family emergency or something, but as always, and excuse, but we want to make sure that we have put together something to help our parents come up with different getaway, get around different barriers that they have. So, that's why social workers and truancy officer comes into play.
Well, and I know our principals try to do a great job with that, too, because these might be, this might be the 20% that could move this district.
Exactly.
Where it needs to go.
Yes.
That was my first thought, but I never dreamed it would be at 20%, never. That's one, that's one in five enrolled at that school.
And for the past few years, we have gone down, and this year, we went, last year, we were at 26, right at 26, and we went up to 26.8. And so, we're still maintaining it, we're not at the, in the 30% anymore, and so, past few years, we have come down.
I'm surprised, and I'm not implying that we're doing anything right or wrong, I just, and it's, that's staggering to me, is a...
And just kudos to Dr. Moore and her team for doing a great job of standing on it, on monitoring absenteeism and helping our principals to get strategies that they can use inside the buildings.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great job, Dr. Moore.
Can you hear? I looked for her earlier, but I never saw her, she's, she's back there. Okay, thank you, Dr. Moore, appreciate that.
Awesome, next up, we have 2526 New Legislation, Dr. Donna Warren.
This past legislative session was very robust up at the Golden Dome. A lot of acts became laws, bills and whatnot became laws, and I'll just say in the essence of time on this slide here, the laws that were passed, they impact each goal area, starting at the bottom with organizational operational efficiency, high-performing staff, family community engagement, and even at the top, student achievement. They added to our George Early Literacy Act. I'll start out with Hospital 268, which became the School Safety Act. It really involves seven components. Many of these, we already have in place and implemented in our school district. The first one there, the Mobile Panic Alert System, we implemented Synthetics Alert System three years ago, and a lot of items were funded locally, also with SPOS funds, and additionally, with our School Safety Grant provided by Godot. Number two there, Development Submit Digital School Maps, we've implemented the Synthetics Safety Blueprint, and it's submitted to our local emergency management agency each year. The third item there, they want us to launch an anonymous reporting system. That's on hold for right now, because it's pending further information from Godot and also GMA, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. However, myself, Mr. Brid, and Mr. Stacks, we have met with several vendors regarding their anonymous system. We haven't made a decision yet, but we're waiting to hear from the state, one will be purchased, we anticipate, this school year. Number four there, expanding student advocacy and safety roles. We're fortunate in our district to have Dr. McElroy and her team of mental health clinicians, that's a worth a day and gauge in. Also, for five, delivered required training programs, we have different platforms in our district to provide trainings to adults and students related to mental health, suicide prevention, and de-escalation. Number six, reviewing and aligning policies to coordinate with local law enforcement agencies. We have a wonderful relationship with the Spalding County Sheriff's Office, as well as Griffin PD. At this point, we're waiting on the MOUs for our SROs, and once we get those, we'll let our attorneys review them, and we will implement them to have a robust information sharing process. And last one there, although it says to be in compliance by January 1st, 2027, I want you to know that Griffin Spalding... I want you to know that Griffin Spalding, because of Project, I think it's Project Aware, the Mental Health Group, a program that we had, that we went away, we funded these personnel locally. We have in place behavioral threat assessment teams, V-TAM teams, that's also headed up by Dr. McElroy and her team. They have processes for that, to deal with students that are in crisis. Next, Senate Bill one, participation in sports teams. We already comply with this law, where we have our young men, our young women, depending upon the gender specific, they participate in specific sports. The next one there, Protecting Georgia's Children from Social Media Act. It incorporates internet and social media safety into our character education program through digital citizenship. Mr. Lonnie Harper has updated policy IFBG, our internet acceptable use to reflect these requirements. And this year, he's in the process of working with a team to develop and implement digital citizenship curriculum for schools using common sense media. So we're very happy about that work by Mr. Harper. Next, House Bill five eighty-one, Homestead Exemption, we just went through that, and you all made a decision and had some hearings back in the spring. Well, guess what? We have to do it again by March of twenty-twenty-seven. So sometime during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, you have to go through that process again to decide to, to stay in or opt out. Yes, ma'am. Last for me, the last two, House Bill three forty-seven, Distraction Free Education Act. Dr. Ridley spoke about that. We have a policy that's been presented to you for first read this evening. And the last one, absenteeism, that really touched on that as well. We work with DFAX and local agencies to increase attendance. We have attendance protocols and committees in place by Dr. Moore and her team. So next, I will turn it over to some HR functions, and that will be Ms. Battle.
Thirty-seven speaks about social security. As an employer, we are required to notify employees that we participate in paying to social security. We're already doing that by way of notification with new hire orientation. We actually have it in the onboarding paperwork in our handbook, and now we have added it to our separation notices. So when people are even leaving the district, they get a notification that the district has contributed into social security on their behalf. Our school psychologist interstate compact, House Bill eighty-one, this is really good that the state of Georgia is participating in that compact. It gives us a lot of flexibility in hiring those school psychologists from other states. And so we are already advertising and recruiting on online platforms and social media presence that recruits from other states, so we are well underway with that. But this is just adding the state of Georgia to that compact. House Bill one oh five, it talks about the disability and death benefit for employees that are disabled or unfortunately killed. And so what has happened here, they have increased the amount of that disability or death benefit, they doubled it. It went from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. So that is very, very good for employees that are disabled or unfortunately tragically killed in a lot of duty. Then House Bill two thirty-five, leave of absence for employees who donate bone marrow or an organ. This now allows employees that are going to serve as donors for either one of those procedures to receive paid leave, and that requires the modification for our GSCS policy, regulation, GARH, our employee leave in absences. So that's going to be something beneficial for people who are actually donors for those life-saving surgeries.
All right, and last but not least, House Bill sixty-three, exams for homeschool students. This is stating that all the assessments, SAT, all those listed right there, must be offered to homeschool students at the same charge or rate that we might do at the school system. So if the school system were to charge a fee, then there may be a fee, but if we don't, then the homeschool students would take it free as well. Currently, there's not a policy for that, but Teaching and Learning is going to collaborate with Student Services, Dr. Moore, to come up with a policy to handle these situations as they arise. And last is House Bill three oh seven, which is the Early Literacy Act and Dyslexia Law. This is just really consolidates and clarifies two bills, House Bill five thirty-eight and Senate Bill forty-eight, stating that in our district, we must have instructional materials, K through five, that are teaching English and language arts. We'll use a screener for dyslexia tools and reading, and we have intervention plans, and we have to offer professional learning to K-three teachers that will give them Orton Gillingham or letters, or they can have the reading or dyslexia endorsements. So that's just a consolidation of those two bills.
I'm sure y'all have plenty of questions for Ms. Sims. This is her first presentation, so we can't let her get off easy like that. So Ms. Sims, come on back to the podium, please.
All right.
So can you tell me, it says exams for homeschooling for our scholars, how many scholars may have, we've had to give exams with at home within our district?
So I spoke with Dr. Moore when this bill came out, and she said currently they had not had any requests from, from homeschool students, therefore there wasn't really a policy. So that's why we're going to get one in place and try to get ahead of it before we do get those requests.
Okay. And can you just talk a little bit more about that as far as like in your work, in your travels, in education with homeschool exams?
The homeschool exams as far as their requests?
Yes, ma'am.
So typically, you would see that unit exams, if you have a hospital homebound student, they would be taking exams. Now, these type of exams, I have not worked with per se as how they would take them as a homeschool, but just my own personal experience, had a friend who had a homeschool child, and so they set up locations, like they might set up a location at our library or one of our schools, and we would hire a proctor, or they would provide a proctor, and we would give that test in a, in a different environment rather than at the school.
Okay, cool. Y'all, any more questions for Ms. Sims, y'all? Nine?
She passed.
She passed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Anybody else, Dr. Warren presenting? That's it? All right, that is amazing.
I kicked him under the table.
That is amazing, so, Mr., you do have a question?
No, there's, there's something on the back sheet about Senate Bill forty-eight, what is, does anyone want to cover that, or is that something?
Bill forty-eight is, is for House Bill thirty-seven, that is the other, that is, those two bills were consolidated for House Bill three oh seven.
Okay.
They really read the same thing, one just went through the House and one went through the Senate, but they're, they're pretty similar.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And our interim superintendent is dying to say something, go ahead, brother.
Um, yes, Governor Kemp, our legislature, Godot, and our school district, they're very, very serious about literacy, elder literacy in particular. You may recall in your weekend, your weekly updates that I sent to you, I sent you some screenshots from the Georgia portal, where each elementary principal had to go in and sign or post some information to attest to. So that's just how serious they're taking, that's a first for us. And we have some of our schools that a hundred percent have their faculty and staff trained, others not so much because of turnover and whatnot, but they're in the process of getting teachers ready for PL so they can become trained. I was over at Moore today, she's in, in great shape with her teachers. And I was at a school two weeks ago, had some turnover, they're enrolling people in professional learning.
That week not talking was getting to you, wasn't it? All right. All right, guys, we now have some information items. One is our construction renovation progress summary, number three oh five, and then we have the monthly facilities and maintenance report coming from Mr. Ball's department for June of twenty-twenty-five. Now at this time, we'll have governance team comments, we'll start with our interim superintendent.
I just want to thank our faculty and staff throughout the district, district office personnel, as well as our students and families for a great start to the school year. We had a tremendous turnout at open house, and we had a couple of strong days of, of school. Saw a couple of kids crying today, a pre-K kid, I was wanting to go home and whatnot, but they got it under control. I'll also add that the presentation that Dr. Ridley and Ms. Kelly made, that's a direct reflection of the principal's desires for the new assessment. I think if we can implement that, that would be a win-win for our district. So today you saw the presentation. At the meeting, two weeks from now, on August nineteenth, we'll come forward with a memo to purchase, to get your support, to purchase and contract with the company, come in and get that program up and running. Also, we had some very, very positive feedback from our survey related to our opening celebration. Hats off to Mr. Adam Pugh, Ms. Laura Bieber for coordinating that. It was loud and clear that they liked our speaker, Mr. Willie Spears. Also liked the timeframe, I want us to hopefully, as addition, we can stick to that, get people back in our buildings. That afternoon, we did have whole board training over at JRCCA with the board and the governor's team, with Mr. Spears and Ms. Bernath from the Georgia School Boards Association. We had some great training related to teamwork, working together collectively, knowing each other as well. And one of the quotes that stuck out to me was excellence in the classroom begins with excellence in the boardroom. And I said it again, it's a pretty heavy statement. Excellence in the classroom begins with excellence in the boardroom. So we can model that, I think we can go a long, long way together. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, I'll go, District One. I just want to give a shout out to all of the community participants who participated in day one, thank you so much for everybody who did that. Thank you to Adam and his department for managing it. It started out as a District One initiative that grew to a district-wide initiative, so thank you, Mr. Pugh and Ms. Bieber for your hard work in getting everybody situated. Also, I started the first day of school early, early, early. Adam picked me up around five forty in the morning, and I joined Mr. Martin and his staff at the bus yard. It was great to see all of our bus drivers who were full of energy, excited to get out there on the first day of schools and pick up our scholars and greet our families. So great shout out to our bus drivers, thank y'all so much for everything that you have done for these three, four days of school, starting school. I just want to say thank you, that you're often overlooked, but we see you and we appreciate the service that you give our scholars and families. Also, joined the folks over at Suzie B. Atkinson Elementary on day one, I was there like right before Principal Jackson and Mr. Shellhouse pulled up on the scene. However, we were able to meet with a, meet with some groups and some scholars and got a chance to meet our young lady that is helping with safety and security over there from Synergy. It was great meeting her. And to our nutrition and custodial staff, thank y'all so much, a lot of work has gone into getting our buildings ready, Mr. Ball and his department, and to Mr. Wheeler and his folks, thank y'all so much for what you do to serve our scholars each and every day. And we are excited as a board at where we're headed in this school district, and we're gonna ask for a excellent school year. We have a lot on our plate, hiring a new superintendent. We also have other things going on, and so, which each board member will be able to tell you what's going on in their districts, but just, it's going to be a great school year, and we're looking forward to great things. District Two?
Good evening, I wanted to speak from the parent perspective about the school year. So open house went tremendously well, it was very smooth, very organized, and I told everybody that I, that I saw, although my kids begged and pleaded for me not to, you know, show face at, at open house. I also was a little shocked, Adam, with your presentation on Infinite Campus, because I use it probably too much. I take screenshots when something comes through saying zero, and then I send it to my students and highlight, me and my, my kids highlight it and say, explain why something says zero. So they're, they would prefer me not to use Infinite Campus, but I use it all the time. So for any parents that are out there, I highly suggest using it, because it also gives you notifications if your student is not in the classroom, which I also contact them and say, where are you? Why are you not in class? Also, I want to, from a parent perspective, let you know that...
You do it too much, Mom.
I know, well, this is me, I'm an overachiever. And I expect the same for my children. I have not heard any rumblings about, you know, the cell phone, nobody has, you know, died from not using their cell phone, except for that I didn't know they could use them during breakfast and lunch. So when my daughter texted me the other day at lunch, I told her I was going to have her arrested for using her cell phone, because I didn't know that they could do that. She swore up and down that it was, it was legal for her to be using it at that point. But kudos to everybody, boots on the ground, it's been a successful school year so far. I've not had any complaints from a parent's perspective or a board member, but thank you.
District Three?
I enjoyed so much day one, but the celebration, I, I have to acknowledge Ms. Douglas, I think everybody should agree, she got the W for the jerseys with her staff name on them.
I ordered one the other day.
And, and I know she's going to surprise me with a box. But I also, I also want to just let everyone know that I, I heard good things about the security officers at the elementary level. People were very pleased, they were very pleased to see the, the detectors and everything, and we got a lot of good comments. But I, I really enjoyed day one, I tried to make my round to every school in District Three, but I, I think I interrupted, I finally got to Mr. Barnes, and they were sitting there, Mr. Martin, you'll appreciate this, they were all sitting at the table, making sure the kids knew their buses, but they were also eating some big chick chicken while they were, so, so they were, they were licking their fingers and typing and doing it, doing it all, so. So I, I, I think everybody, the attitude, I think the attitudes were wonderful that first day, and, and that was a, just a welcome, it was a welcome day for us in the system. So kudos to everybody, and we thank you for your work.
All right, going ahead to the southwest side, go ahead, Ms. Weldon.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to say that I made numerous school visits in our district, it was enthusiastic, there was energy, I got to see an avid team presentation that some of y'all were in on, that was a lot of fun. That school is on fire, hats off to the avid teams that we got to see. I too, as Ms. Register stated, have gotten no complaints from parents or, or any others, and that moves my next comment to Mr. Patrick Martin, thank you for a smooth opening, those phones were answered, the kids got to and from school, I had not one single complaint. So thank you for all your hard work in that. I'm excited about this Project Strong, I'm looking forward to seeing it, you know, get going, that sounded like a really exciting program. I think our system is headed in the right direction, I've seen a lot of positive change, I've heard lots of wonderful comments about our school system, so that's wonderful. And I'd like to thank all the employees from bus drivers, nutrition people, planners, central office superintendent, I mean, everybody, because it's, it's, it's a change, and it's great to see our school system moving in this positive direction. So thank you to everybody.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. First of all, Adam, I don't know how you and Dr. Warren can top the celebration we just experienced, I'm just going to tell you, in my seventh year now, I believe, that's probably the best one I've been to. I'm just going to tell you, number one, I think because of the length, just get her done and get them back to their schools, that's all you need to do, it's pretty simple. So thank you, Adam, and you and Laura and your team, it's just incredible. I'd like to welcome officially Ms. Sims here, I appreciate your, your efforts. This is your first official meeting, so we welcome you. I wanted to give a shout out to my neighbors in Sun City, I went to Jordan Hill opening day, and I went to Beaverbrook opening day, and it was a ton of my Sun City neighbors, especially at Beaverbrook, one pod, and in Sun City, there's pods of homes, one through, I think we're up to forty-something now. One pod, I cannot tell you what that pod brought to Beaverbrook Elementary to give out to students. out to students. Toothpaste, toothbrushes, pencils, pens, pads, notebooks, you name it, they had it. So I just want to give out a shout out to my, to my neighbors. Then I go over to Jordan Hill, and it's just the same. Students came, positive, I spoke to so many people I had not met yet, new teachers, new employees, thank them for their efforts, and I've not been up that early in a long time. But it was, it was exciting to get up early and go visit the two schools in my district. I want to give a shout out to all the people behind the scenes, especially bus drivers this time of year, custodians this time of year, and the nutrition people this time of year, because everybody's just trying to get into the groove, trying to get in the saddle and, and make it smooth every day for the people that we, we support in our organization, and all the support staff. Gosh, people don't realize, and I've said this to Dr. Warren many times, people don't realize how hard this work is. It's hard, but everyone in this room and everyone listening, I want you to know that I appreciate your daily efforts to make us all better. And I want to end again with this, the Glenn, Sam Glenn that spoke to us at Georgia School Boards, you have to go, you have to grow through what you go through. You have to grow through what you go through. Mr. Loki told our summer school graduates that, and I have not ever, I will never forget being exposed to Sam Glenn at GSBA in June in Savannah. So again, thank you to all for making our opening days smooth, and I too have not heard anything but just great things. Dr. Warren, I also wanted to thank you for what you've done, because you didn't have a whole lot of time to do what you have done to start a new school year, so I wanted to give a shout out to you too.
Good job.
It truly is a team effort, you know, everybody just roaring together and vote. Everybody roaring together, team effort, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, governance team, for your comments. We do have some items for executive session to discuss and deliberate upon appointment, employment of personnel. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates for us coming out of this session to go into executive session? It's been probably moved by Ms. McDonald of the 5th, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Register of the second, is there any discussion here, none, please raise your white hand. By voting yes, we are in executive session.